Let's begin to signify on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, two minutes, we have questions and discussion. All move to the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all payers say aye.
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 Approval agenda, you mean fractions there? It's one of that day.
Except for Kevin's Odessa maintenance contract came in for some reason, so that's what add to that.
Kevin had that, right?
Yep, it's in there.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All payers say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Visitors and delegations, do they want to address their commission?
Kevin over zero. I'd just like to give the commissioners an update on the new machines, the operators seem to be doing very well and we're gonna be doing revisits next week when they're on the field and seeing how they're doing. But everything's going really good with the moderators, just wanted to give the commissioners an update.
They're all on board now, all of them are here? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Nope, that's it, thank you guys.
No other visitors or delegations? Okay, we'll be moving to Steve. Coordinator of State Trial and Software Maintenance, I think we'll let you talk about the hive and also.
Let's all start with software maintenance for the VJAS software, it's $3,000 annual fee, I guess.
That's our annual?
Yeah, just to keep it up to date.
You want us to make a motion on that?
Yes, please.
You have the budget already?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll make a motion.
Okay, have a made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, roll call.
Hi, sir.
Hi.
Paulson.
Hi.
Burns.
Hi.
Wykon.
Hi.
Brom.
Hi.
Go ahead, Steve.
Secondly, I guess, I'd like to attend the 2015 Esri User Conference, which is the software that we just paid $3,000 for. It's in San Diego at the end of July, I've gone the last ten years. I think it's well worth the time and money.
You have that in your budget, Steve?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll move to who bought a state travel, first you, then after.
Second, motion, you have a second? Any other discussion, questions, all payers say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Aye, tell us what we're doing here.
I guess the insurance company came back saying they only pay, only pay to put in a refurbished unit, the same that's been in there for the last seven, eight years, which I don't know if we want to do or not. An upgraded unit would be a considerable amount of money.
I think Elizabeth used $30,000, that approximate fee?
Yeah, the one estimate we got.
And this is how old, when they got dry?
2007, I think.
2007.
Seven. Look at that, eight years old. How long is usually last, Steve?
It's computer equipment, so five to seven years.
Just buy a computer and you can keep getting rid of money, is that how it works?
Yeah.
Love how a lot of them work.
And talking to Steve once today too, is if I can cut in, if that's okay, Steve? He was recommending that we do update the system because we're still on the.
Standard definition.
Oh, so it's a high, high depth?
Yeah.
What other advantages are there to a new system over what, obviously there's gotta be upgrades since it's a lot newer, I would guess.
Yeah, like just better.
Better quality.
Yeah, resolution, sound, I guess.
And our speaker in the bed right now, they've been really scratching for probably approximately a year now.
Didn't we talk at one point, or I remember it mentioned that extension had paid part cost share in the past? What kind of, if we decided to do something, what kind of cost share have been on the past?
Well, I, Steve and I need to get ahold of Andrew, I think that's his name, and find out exactly if they'll do it again. I think they will because the extension services uses it, but I don't think they want us to get too spendy with a system. So, we're gonna work on that next.
They don't want to connect to anything before we had a final number, I guess.
Extension, that's ADSU from their half of running the office here.
Right, and then they use it a lot for training.
Is there anything coming up that we have to do immediately, or?
I think it was, can't be checked the schedule, it's August.
I guess we gotta look at it.
Yeah, but the company where we have the insurance through kind of wants to know what we want to do, if we want to get a refurbish, or if they just want us to give us some money towards a new system. So that's why.
What did you think for the last system?
For the Polycom alone, $7,000. And now the one with all the nets and it's 96, but that was just for, I don't, did we check on other ones, or just ABI?
Just ABI. Right now, we really have no system at all because of what's there, it's dry. How much of an inconvenience is that doing to us, Steve?
Not really, I guess, until August or.
Is that October coming there?
How long does it take to get one of these units?
We'd order one, how long would it get here?
Probably not too long.
And then would we order one when you install, or you would, or?
I guess depending on what, if we just got the refurbished one, I could put the wires back where they were, I guess. But a new system might probably be a whole another mess.
So for $30,000, they won't install it, they'll just sell it to us?
They had installation on there.
No.
Yeah, that was part of it?
Fix, fix out and install.
On top of the third?
No, that was, that was with that. It was actually $30,000 and then the three-year support was another five, so the whole system was $30,336.71. And that was with the install in, which was $6,000.
AVI is a bit smart, correct?
Yeah, and that's pretty spendy. I don't know what it takes to install.
Are there other places in the state that can do this, or just ABI, or?
Would we be wise to advertise for RFP other?
ABI is all, I think, I've dealt with.
Okay. Well, why ask, 'cause like you said, if we advertise it, try to get some better bids, but then if you buy this system from somebody else, then will ABI service it?
Right.
We almost have to stay with whoever's gonna service it, you know?
Right, well, but if you get a, if you get a, you didn't want to specify in the RFP that you wanted.
Yeah.
A service contract and an installation service out there from them.
I know the last system we bought, we didn't take the maintenance. And we never, as far as I know, we never had an issue except when the one thing burnt out, but I think that's been replaced, right? What was that thing we just replaced on the ceiling?
The projector.
Yes.
What file do we take this out of Elizabeth?
Well, that's something we have to decide. It should come out of the IT budget because of the fact we get reimbursed on that from our cost allocation. So let me do that.
There's nothing there.
I haven't checked, I don't think we budgeted for it.
There isn't an extra $30,000 in it?
Not quite that much.
What's the next one, in general?
Yeah, in general, or, yeah, it wouldn't have to be general, 'cause counting one is basically improvements on the courthouse. Well, this would be an improvement.
Yeah, could we, could we ask for assistance from Social Services as a part of their IT budget?
They probably didn't budget either.
I know, but maybe they have some in their budget that could go toward it.
And extension.
And it's, yeah, you know.
Does Social Services use it?
Yeah. I can sure email Social Services and ask them.
I, I mean, it's just a thought, I mean, well, good for money. I don't know what they've gotten or IT budget, I'm sorry, I'm not up on it.
I think it could, the final decision could wait if we just wanted to decide right now if we put in the old refurbished one, or if you want, if you decide we'll operate and we can come back with more definitive numbers.
I think we should take Steve's advice and table it till last meeting, till we have more solid numbers and, you know, see what extension can do and see what Social Services can do.
But we could do an RFP, right?
Advertise for it?
Yeah.
I didn't know we were gonna advertise, I thought we only had one bid though. No?
Well, I don't know, I, I thought it sounded like the.
Refurbish one?
No, no, a new one.
No, this is, they, the bid you got was from ABI.
Yeah.
How old is that bid then?
Just, um.
So you just did it after it burnt out?
Yes.
Okay.
It was actually, we got it right for the last meeting.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at, if we go with them, basically?
Four seven is the overall.
And we don't have to advertise if we just pick one?
Well, I'm not too sure on that because it's.
Twenty-five thousand, you live?
I think it's fifty, thirty-hundred for. We'd have to take a look and double check on that, of course, but usually what are the construction contracts, it's a hundred, but.
I don't know, this is a general contract.
ABI is what you want, though.
I think they're the only one in the state, I think.
Mr. Carr, estimate ninety-six?
Um, for the Polycom, your one is ninety-six, but the whole system, which is the speakers and everything, is $30,336 without the extended one.
I guess I'd be located at that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table it until the next meeting, so we've got some more solid numbers and where we need to go legally.
Fifth, we have a motion and a second, to table it till the next meeting. Any other discussion, all payers say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Steve?
I do need to know though, what you want to do with, right, should we just take the funding and then we can buy a refurbish, or decide?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, now you should take the payment as cash and then decide to do it, if we want.
I'll second, huh?
A motion and a second to accept the payment. Artford was out offering. You have a second, any other discussions? All payers say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Nothing else on that? Kevin?
All right. First off, we'll start with a project, two little projects. Ramsey County 10, there's really not much to update there from the last meeting. Cool, have a.
I do stand on, get back to the DOT, and they're okay with us having quotes haul out their comfort material that's at the toll booth before the limits come off without being turned based to that, since they can't, since they're still frosting around, they can't haul any of the parole or any of the controlling items. So there, there needs to be some work out there off and on, but there's no time for it yet.
Any questions on 10, Ramsey 10? Okay, then truck route phase one. So yes, we had a proposal from, not really a proposal, but this conversation from Greg Close about closing that road during construction and how much money we'll be able to save doing it. I don't know if you guys are interested in doing something like that, but it looks like there's gonna be a pretty significant savings if we try to do it the same way we did on Ramsey County 10, where just allow local traffic or whatever. He said he's willing to work with the people that need to get through there for farming or whatever and basically handle it the same way we did on 10. Just, just what do you guys feel about that?
How long is it gonna be, Kevin?
Probably looking at most of summer.
Most of summer.
My application date right now is October 17th, I think, and like, and with the change order, imagine how we're gonna spend it in these couple of weeks.
One percent to the contract if you own a four dollar.
Well, it's about seventeen percent, I guess, so that's pretty significant, there's, between the two, there's $178,000 in plaguing the pile of car.
Between phase one and phase two?
Yeah.
Oh, so we'd save that over the course of both projects then?
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Speed to work up those both?
Yeah, speed it up, yeah. That's the whole idea, I mean, that's the thought.
Comments from the commission?
I think it worked pretty well, he met with a lot of difference on it when he suggested that up on 10, but I think all those people were pretty happy with it.
Yes, they were. Basically just let people that lived out in there use it, right?
Yeah, they would have, yeah. And he said he was willing to work with those people and accommodate us.
We'd have kids at signing during 20 and.
Yeah.
Across all of the terminal adapter, come through town?
Yeah, we changed some of the.
On the other end also, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll take actually less siding than what we have now.
That's true.
To do it, but I guess it would reduce engineering costs a little bit too, just because they're able to put both sides together at one time. That's a, has one left instead of two separate lanes, so that also that way too.
So the thought is, we're looking at a pretty significant savings.
Would it get done any faster than?
Definitely, yeah. And if everybody's agreeing on this, we would ask him for a written proposal, how much we're gonna be saving, 'cause that's something we'd need to know from him, how much he anticipates.
And he'd probably come in and present, or have one of these guys come in and present?
He would, he would come into the meeting and talk to us if, if that's a wish.
I'd like to see at least a proposal on the dollars before we make a decision.
Yeah.
I mean, we are, I mean, I think it's positive to get it done quicker.
Yeah.
With that, but we want to cut the traffic off from the guys that are hauling it from the north side of the road too, so that's something to consider.
When do you think he's looking at starting?
Soon as the little ones come out, comes on, well, yeah, that's what we're anticipating, aren't we?
Yeah, that's when he's, when he can start.
And that's probably gonna be, you know, it's tough to outguess that, but I would say around the first, middle, first of the middle of May. They're starting to come off down the Dickens area.
Well, it could come back, but the first meeting in May, a proposal, how much like Gavin said, how much money we're gonna save and.
Yeah.
It's all black and white.
If we're interested in, that's why I'll have a.
Consensus, the commission is that way.
Yeah. We'll proceed with that, then.
Okay.
One thing he'd suggest, too, is, I think, I don't know if it makes sense to do it, but he'll start using the additional money to put more of the aggregate surfacing on now rather than later, but I don't know, I think with the eight inches we've got total, between, with the change order addition, I think we'll be okay with what's there, if you need to use it on other projects.
And we were kind of scolded by Brian about wanting to put extra money on, so, but this will pop.
That would be enough to put how much more on then, approximately?
Um, probably not quite two inches.
I'd keep Steve happier.
Did Brad want to put more?
No, he wanted, no, he was wondering why we were putting so much on.
Oh, so much?
Well, when we were gonna, originally we were thinking about putting all fifteen inches on, we could have an academy press thirteen at the top, but then that doesn't drain as well if you put pavement right on top of that past thirteen, so we're gonna.
Brian's thought was it might sit like that for five years, ten years, fifteen years, asphalt never show up, and then wonder why we did it, so.
Well, you can explain that to me if you can.
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
Have you?
Anything else?
Have we talked to any of the merchants who farm most of that out there, what they're?
Well, both merchants will be involved with this, are they?
I believe, I think they use for land.
Well, they.
What I mean for phase two, are you talking?
No, I'm still on things wound up.
It's just on the road closure.
I see, I think he's been talking to them, 'cause there's some borrow needed for phase two.
Okay.
Through the curve there.
I was just looking, and it looks like it's probably, you know, most of it is farmed by merchants, so.
There's three, three people that live out there, so he, you know, it would have to be open for that local traffic if we had this.
Right, and outside is open.
Okay, let's, what we got next?
Phase two of that truck probably, right away issue a lot of.
I guess they're, I'm not sure if she's yet, all the paperwork is out to the landowners, I met with two of them on site today, and they, I guess they're concerned for the two people, the buildings on the south end there, so.
Do we need to deal with the land values on the commercial land? Or do we have that?
Um, you know, last year when, when Glenn got the land, or to set the appraisal valuation for the project, I guess we just wanted to make, you know, to confirm that that also applied to phase two. So, I assume that it did, and lots of proceeding with, but just wanted to confirm that.
So that's bad, it would be using the same on both projects.
Valuation, yeah.
Yeah. And also, we met with the DOT out there, where they're gonna be changing the approaches on the US two and just verbally, nothing in writing yet, they're thirty. I think they're gonna work on the right-of-way between US two and all the railroad tracks, north to all the tracks, and then either they're gonna give it back to us or whatever, but they're gonna deal with the right-of-way issue as part of their project.
Okay, that sounds great.
We may end up open in the end, but which is fine, it would've been that way anyway. Okay, so that's it for the truck, are there any more questions on?
You're gonna have Paulson here on the.
Next meeting, yeah.
Sounds good.
I hope we'll have the pricing for the change order for that south end for the next commission meeting too, I guess. Just got the final plans for that put together today.
Okay.
Okay, Ramsey County eight, um. Just need a motion to advertise for bids, they're, they're not quite ready yet, but they'll, they'll be ready before the next meeting, so it'd be nice to have that motion to advertise for the bids now.
How about?
Okay, you have a motion? You have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All payers say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Any other questions on eight? Okay, then Ramsey twenty-nine, um, I said, uh. Our engineering friend had a bolt for this project, but it was the only one we got, it was four on the A, so. I don't want to get long, took the bolt real quick here. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yep, there are any questions?
Go ahead, Kevin.
So if there's not any questions, then we'll need a motion to hire them as the engineering firm for this project.
Some will.
Motion, you have a second?
Second.
Second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Go ahead, Kevin.
And then the contract for that project, for engineering, I don't have time to get that.
You're not that careful, of course.
Yeah, I'm kind of quick.
Yeah, cool. That will probably become at the next meeting. And we're ahead of the eight, Paul, and the next one, we need a motion to advertise for bids for that too, but if you want to do it now, that's fine, but at least we'll have it done.
Go ahead with that.
That's a good idea.
So.
Got a motion to advertise for the bids on nine, oh, a second?
Second.
You have a second, any other discussion? All payers say aye.
Aye.
All, motion carries.
And then on the chipso project on that, I did talk to the contractor, and he was willing to wait till the end of the season to do that job, so basically our chipso will be on top of the new paving, which is good, that's perfect. A lot of, a lot of people do it out there. So that all worked out in our favor, but the only thing is we'll have to rush to get all that work done by August fifteenth.
We're gonna put that into the busy quest?
Yep, get it done, yep, by August fifteenth.
Get the paving good by August fifteenth?
Yeah, the whole project, all this paving. We probably won't do any paint striping, but.
Okay.
We'll strip it out. Okay, that's it for nine, any questions on Ramsey nine? Uh, number two is a motion to sign the summer maintenance contracts, now we've got Hammer, Prospect, and Odessa Hammer. Don't want to wait for it, now it's fresh water. So I need a motion for those three.
I need a motion.
We have a motion for the summer contracts. You have a second, you have a second, any other discussion? All payers say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Well, actually, I have this nagware on a thermal road, I'm just visiting with the township, it doesn't sound like they're gonna participate in any of the local cost share on that, so. I just, I think we brought it up at the last meeting, we talked about it, and if the township wasn't gonna help pay that, I would bring it back to the commission, so. I don't know if we're gonna do anything different there, but.
Why did the township, or how and why did that township get that road?
They gave up the ownership of the truck off, three and a half miles, the ownership of the airport road, hundred mile and a half, so then they took over that three quarters, so they lost six miles, lost ownership of six miles and gained that three quarters. Before that was a split fifty-fifty with township and county.
Well, I've talked to pretty near everybody out there, and they're not very happy that that's a township road now, they want it back to a, to a county road, so.
Well, they get much better services than the county one, don't they?
Yeah. But before we were getting.
I don't blame them.
You know, you got, you got the basketball games, all those games, you go out there at two o'clock in the morning, everybody's trying to sneak out of town, there's a lot of traffic on that road, and I had talked with some of the township people too, and, you know, they said, well, we'll do a little more grading, but they're gonna have to grade every day. It was a fifty-fifty split, Kevin?
Yeah, and the township never helped us out much on it. They didn't pay for any of the extra bleeding, or any of the nag water. Fiona paid for the gravel that we did put on, so there wasn't any cost, I think either one was there. Through the past, we've gotten, for those six miles that they lost, we, we charged them for summer maintenance, you know, $240 per mile for blading it, and now they don't have that cost, so. They lost six miles at $240 per mile, so.
$140.
And they're not willing to put that money into that three-quarter mile with, with Meg?
That's what they're telling us, yeah.
What, do we ever have any vehicle counts there?
No.
Yeah.
About. About enough.
Look.
And then when they acquire that road and the, the ditch and everything, is there, is that their responsibility too then? You know, because it comes across that field and there's that culvert and there's a little ditch that goes to town, which you guys clean out for two, three years?
Yep, I mean, Mark has opened that right of way.
Oh, okay.
That's what they're asking, yeah.
School bus route, Mark?
Yep.
How many school buses use it?
Ooh, quite a few.
Quite a few school buses.
Yeah.
What's the shortcut into town?
Anything that goes right through the toll?
It's like in two thousand ten, it was, you know, it doesn't say the dates of the deadlines, but it was, two hundred and ten was the highest. Uh, down by the elevator, it was ninety-three.
A lot of people use that, did I would do.
This looks like three hundred and fifty-eighth on here.
Yeah, this is fourteen, twenty-fourteen.
Yeah, looks like three fifty-eight, three fourteen, three eleven.
Um, fourteen.
Any thoughts from the commission here?
Okay.
Two?
What kind of costs are gonna be to do three quarter mile there?
Do what?
If we did, if we paid for the three quarter?
Uh, it's about six grand, five thousand.
We've done it in the past. We picked these, but they cost you fifty-fifty on that.
Uh, no, the homeowners paid twenty-five percent, uh, the county paid seventy-five percent.
So that's situation we'd be in now, so?
No.
And the town, and the town?
We don't own the road anymore, but.
The township says that they're not gonna pay for it, so.
I would like that road to go back to being a county road myself. Any other thoughts?
I don't know, I, so who decided the, you know, I guess, I, I guess I'd like to know where these three township officers live. Do they live on that road, any of them?
Yes.
I guess, a petition maybe to your township officer would be your.
Well, my opinion is I think we should keep that road if we are dealing with towns like that, and that means school buses are going down that road. And, um, that would be more easier to cut across, and this is only gonna get worse next year, we're gonna close the, um, that, so we don't have to, which we want.
But if you have a deal with a council like in Cold Road, that's.
Similar to that.
Over two thousand. Uh, road south of Wall Lane Drive, which is a gravel road out in Creole Township, that's over a thousand.
Is that a township road then?
That's a township road. I mean, they're struggling too, so.
Well, township who in here, Creole?
North Creole. One south of, uh, Wall Lane Drive is South Creole.
I think we should keep it at least for another year because.
No, I think, I think they're, they take over, so that maintenance, because they gave up six miles of maintenance forever, ever.
You wanna deal with them?
Sure.
Or straight with them?
Yeah.
We probably should call up perimeter roads.
We should, honestly, we should get together.
And then maybe we have them available to talk to them.
Right.
Should we do that?
Yeah.
Tell them that we're gonna talk about that road, so. Well, I'd like to know when that is, because everybody on that road's gonna come, every last one of them. Some of, some of, you know, I, I didn't talk directly, but I had heard some of them have been saving up so that they could pay the twenty-five percent of the rest of that road, you know, because we haven't done it all before and, and, you know, they, they wanna pay, they wanna pay to do the whole road now, just to keep the dust and the condition of the road together. Because I, uh, according to my neighbor, they, they laid that section three times last summer, where they put the chemical.
Whatever.
But, yeah, that was just what he told me.
Right.
So.
They got done more than that. It was way less than it was, and I'll, I'll tell you after, it was more than three times. I don't know, I, if you take, if you, for whatever reason, North Creole is the only township that's not, uh, helping out the residents, if however you wanna put it. South Creole, uh, they, they do six miles hundred percent.
Yep.
They do probably a hundred mile that they do share with, with homeowners, for whatever reason, I don't know why they gotta go in that way, but, um. And there's some other townships that help pay for the mag water that the residents put down too. I think Webster Township helps up by Gersky. I'm, I'm not sure why North Creole was.
They were pretty adamant about it, though. That's my suggestion, maybe we should put Kevin, meet with the township supervisor, see what you can do by yourself, you know, and tell them how important this road is to the community. And, uh, we as a county don't wanna see this, you know, lost or.
I think that's a good thing for the road.
Yes, yes, I agree with you, yeah. Lot of safety there, get rid of the dust. Jerry?
Can I say something about, um, I live in the south, the South Creole, Creole, and Kevin has been to a couple of our meetings, and there's some residents that come to every one of our meetings about that south Wall Lane Drive is what, what I refer to it as. And, um, the township just decided to do that, is it mag chloride or whatever they put on there? For the full length of it, even though nobody lives on it, just to try and hold that road together, because I guess they bladed and three days later it's back to so rough you can hardly drive on it. And I'm wondering if maybe the county, if the county could participate, just if it's over a certain traffic count. You know, because that, it's a big cost to the township for that dust control.
Did you say the vehicle count of that road is, Kevin, thousand?
It's over thousand, just over thousand. Ten eighty-three or five, just from memory, yeah, it's probably on that sheet, I don't remember like twenty-fourteen sheet.
That road does give tore up a lot, yeah, it must be a lot of black dirt, you know, it'd be close to the top of the road too.
It's got pretty good oil on it.
But it's also to have it grinded, you know, I'm sure there's all kinds of boat traffic going down that road. Okay, what do we wanna do?
Well, let's have Kevin talk to them first if we can get anywhere, because, we don't, we don't know what we need.
But I just wanna make sure we're, you know, ahead of our.
Ahead of the make?
Yeah, that's the end of.
That's the end of it, it's what Kevin talks.
That's the end of June, okay, we have some time left.
Oh, and the bay, first we do.
Yeah.
We gotta, we still gotta lose time, though.
I don't wanna take your bargaining power away, but if they could just come up with some, if they're saving on not maintaining, you got them six miles of road, then, that would, you know, help a lot of them. But I think we, county should be a fifty-fifty on that road now, I think we should go back to that.
Well, it's twenty-five seventy-five.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Twenty-five them or us?
Yes, no, twenty-five of them, seventy-five us, so we're spending five thousand dollars of roughly, as a taxpayer's dollars, the mag water. And, and if we start doing other roads that need a certain content, you know, that's just gonna go up.
Probably people are saying, oh, a bunch of helps to those, you know, the safety of it, you know, without having these school buses going down some of these roads, it's pretty important, um, safety.
And now with oil refineries, there's gonna be a lot more.
Yes.
Well, and I, isn't that road gonna get a lot more use if you're gonna close the truck road too? You're gonna close the truck road, the whole perception of the truck road, oh, they'll be sneaking through.
There'll be some car traffic coming out.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be.
It's not supposed to be trucks there.
Well, the cars aren't supposed to, but, and we all know how that goes.
Okay, will Kevin, you'll talk to him, is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good, anything else? All you got, good enough. With that, we'll move into our finished business, our exemption discussion, what do we have to figure first?
I just gave you that information that Linda let Derek send out to, to me that you requested, when that payment took out, and then she attached an opinion, and also the exemption sheets, permission for our house.
Do you, do you need other information?
I think Steve's been working on, I'll let him explain that first.
How you doing, Steve?
I need another meeting in a couple of weeks. I came up with a number and sent it to Jerry.
Okay.
Last week, so, do we have that number, or not ready to show us yet? I found five hundred and seventy-eight possible.
Five hundred and seventy-eight possible?
I included everything that could possibly, the, maybe was farms, and I figured I'd rather err on the side of including too many than missing a few. So I would be ninety-nine percent sure some of them are abandoned or underwater, but I figured, I didn't wanna be the one to eliminate them and find out what they were.
Right. Do you have any idea how many of them are paying taxes at this time?
That's.
Well, the five hundred and seventy-eight aren't paying taxes, are they?
Huh? That's how many work out.
That are eligible, right?
We don't know if they're eligible.
How did you say that, Steve? That are far more, that are out in the country, is that what we're saying?
That are not currently paying any residential.
Okay.
Property.
Okay, where are we going now then? Anybody got any thoughts? Adam?
What's it going to take to delineate that list down from five seventy-eight to what we think is, you know, like you said, some of them are underwater, things like that, I mean, do we have to go through parcel by parcel? Do we have to just add this on them, I mean, what, what do you think the course forward is here?
Well, I think we could, I think between Steve and I, we could find through in that list, you know, if the farm stands out in the water, you know, like Steve said, he identified all of them that, all of them possible. We could, before we sent out letters, I mean, we, we don't wanna send them out of farm stands under five feet of water.
No.
That'd be, that'd be an insult.
No, of course.
So I think we can refine it down, you know, we can identify with LiDAR, the stuff that's out in the water, eliminate them first. There's probably some that maybe if I can go through, I can eliminate them just by looking through the township maps and stuff. So I, you know, I think we can refine that down before we make an attempt to send out anything, you know, just to eliminate the, any more. We don't wanna antagonize anybody, Kevin, you don't have to.
Okay, set some of these timelines for me, you know. We're working on taxes for two thousand sixteen, right, that's when these would be paid if they're, we can't, it's too late to set them up for two fifteen, right?
Right.
So we have to, you're ready for two thousand sixteen, what's the final day then, that we have to have this done, February one? Is that what Lisa Disa told me, I, I'm not sure.
No, February first is the assessment date. The equalization meeting in April is when the townships approve the values, you know, so it should be done by them, you know, the values need to be placed on the properties by them.
But we're past that date, you know.
Yeah, and I'm, that's, I'm talking for two thousand sixteen.
When, when do we, when do we hold township assessors meeting for, adding all the books and all that kinda stuff?
Like towards the middle of February, I think, normally.
So that's basically what we'd be shooting for, in other words, so we could have the properties that we need to have letters sent to, whatever, to work, I guess we have to have everything done, so that we know what we need to assess.
Right, so we're looking at April of two thousand sixteen to have this all done.
Well, yes, yes, yes.
The, the thing about that is.
And these taxes would be due early as, well, like.
Seventeen.
February fifteen to seventeen.
Fifteen would be your cutoff, yeah.
Statements would go out December of two thousand sixteen. But the work, the physical work measuring up the structures needs to be done before winter hits. I mean, nobody's gonna wanna be out measuring up a hundred houses when there's snow on the ground. You know, so each one of them has to be measured up, you know, and inspected, so that needs to be done before winter.
But our township assessors would be doing that within their own townships, correct?
Yes, yeah, if, but we usually don't meet with the assessors until February, we'd have to set up some more meetings.
February of sixteen?
Yes.
And then you have to have your final paperwork done in April of sixteen?
Yeah.
Well, you gotta have a meeting with the assessors before that.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna take some prior planning, because we don't wanna give them their book in February and say, now you gotta go measure these all up and have the values on before April.
Okay.
But, and the numbers show that that, they're about half, that they have about half the townships, the individual assessors have half the townships, you have the other half.
Yeah.
And a significant number of the townships that you have are new, so you're not as familiar with them as you are with the ones that you've been with for years, but. There'll be a lot of elimination on the ones that you've been doing for years, but if you know those pretty good.
The ones that are close around here, it's mostly non-farmers that are being taxed already.
Yeah, and they're involved in that five hundred and seventy-eight figure then too?
No, no.
They're not, okay.
Well, anybody that's already being taxed isn't included in that figure, right?
Correct.
Okay. What's our next step then?
We probably should inform the assessors that this is what we're up, what we're doing, and get them together and, you know, tell them to start identifying the properties that he's got on his list in their townships.
I, I guess, if you would give a directive for us to do this, I'll come up with a procedure to present to you guys how I think it should go, you know, how we're gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I guess that's kinda how I think we should do it, it's just a matter of, the list has to be narrowed down, what it has to be in, uh, we don't need to talk to the assessors until we know exactly what we have for a list, I don't think, I mean, everybody kinda knows what's going on already.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I don't know, I guess that's what, I don't know, we need a motion, so to speak, but.
One thing I wanna ask Steve first, do you have this broke down in townships?
Yes, I do.
How many, ten in this township or thirty in that one, you know where they're at in push townships, so we could send those maps out to the township people. And have them identify, the assessors, have them identify if there is somebody living in that house or if it's underwater, is that the correct way to do it, Steve, what do you think?
Yeah, could be done, I guess.
We need to, what do you think, Adam?
Well, if you break, I, I actually don't mind that, if you break down by township, then we know the eighteen townships we're covering now, and the eighteen that we don't, so if we get a good concise list, then we can get, yeah, we could. Call on the eighteen assessors from those townships and hand the list over to them, and then they can delineate the list further down to what they think needs to be assessed, and then we send the letters on. I guess, but I, I, yeah, I think Jerry needs to come, just come up with the, uh, the idea of how it needs to happen.
How does an assessor decide who they think needs to be assessed? I, I don't get it.
Well, then.
I've heard some pretty wild stories over the last couple of weeks, that's why I wanna, I wanna know how an assessor, you know, on this high paying job he's got, assessing his township. How does he determine who he's gonna assess? I heard somebody say this week, well, that's a farm, they got a bunch of horses and chickens and cattle running around, I'm not gonna go assess that household. I got figures here, there's a lot of people with horses who aren't farmers. I mean, I don't know how, are, are there certain guidelines, should every household in a township be assessed? We're not asking if the, we're not asking the assessor to tax them, we're asking the assessor to put a value on it. It's up to the owner of that property to determine whether or not he wants to apply for a farm exemption, correct? Am, am I right in this, or am I all wet?
Well, I, I don't think that we should go out and put a, measure up structures and put a value on them if they're not taxable, that's, that could be three hundred.
How do we decide if it's taxable?
That's where this, the application, that's where the application going all comes in.
No, you guys, we're talking about it. I heard about the assessor who.
Let's not, let's not go down that road.
I'm not going to talk about any person.
Let's not have Jerry come up with a plan, you know, let's see what happens. We could hammer this up for a long time. What do you think, Adam?
Well, it's, I understand where you're coming from, but the guidelines that the state gives us off of the century code are pretty clear, what needs to be taxed and what doesn't need to be taxed. I mean, if the assessors are told exactly how the century code reads, we delineate the down to say there's, say you have six houses in your township that are a possibility, they know who lives there, who doesn't live there, what their activities could be or couldn't be, then they determine that person might need to be assessed. Well, okay, then we send them the letter. Or if it's, if it gets down to six houses in that township and they don't want to know or they don't want to go through that list, we just send everybody the letter and if they need to get the exemption, we'll send the letter back.
It was clear when Linda wrote that everything is taxable unless it's exempted.
That's correct.
And they, and they need to file an exemption for it.
It's in century code, it's.
Put it down, put it down.
I, I think the, the letter needs to go out even if it's a vacant house that nobody's lived in for ten years. The vacant house exemption is one of them on the list. If there's a, if there's a house there that could even be fixed up. I've got one right now way up by Lottona, they bought for four thousand dollars and I bet they're putting a hundred into it.
Well, they'll assess that four thousand until they get a hundred and four in it, then what?
No, what I'm saying is that one would have been one that you would have skipped over. Somebody bought it. The front portrait fell off it already. They bought it and that house is going to.
This list will change from year to year. Or how often we're going to do this, every three years? What Nelson County said, every three years they were doing it? Updating or?
Yeah, essentially.
So it could change, you know. House burns down, someone moves out.
Well, essentially, every three years after one, after somebody qualifies for the exemption. Then they just have to qualify once in the next subsequent three years again to get the exemption because you have to beat the, the three year up.
Let's just make damn sure we don't send any notices out to anybody that's got their house underwater for twenty-three years. Let's make damn sure we don't do that.
We do most of the townships that have anything to do with the lake. We got, we've got a contract with this, so.
Makes you recover them all.
But Nelson County has picked up, since they started this in two thousand five, a hundred and fifty-five houses up to this year.
Nelson County?
Who gave you those figures, Jack?
No, the tax director. She's the one that does the work. She said to date, the first year they picked up a hundred and two houses. Since then, they've picked up another fifty-three. So it's.
Okay, okay, we got that. Any other ideas here then? What do you want to do?
I guess I would make the motion to direct Jerry to work with Steve, come up with a plan together on how to get it done and bring it back to us in two weeks to make a decision if that's how we want to go forward or not to, if you like the letter, if you don't like the.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? A motion and a second? Other comments? Roll call.
Olson.
Aye.
Fern. Isler.
Aye.
Licon.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Okay. Do we expect out some information, I guess, to move forward then?
I guess I would like to request, make a request though, is when you ask me for some information that I get to at least finish my sentence that I'm in. I don't get cut off right in the middle of something I'm trying to say.
Okay, what do you want to say?
Well, I was trying to explain the Nelson County thing and I pretty much got cut off. You know, so if you don't want to hear about it.
The facts of what Nelson County did, you know. Let's do that.
No.
Okay, anything else? Any review information on Ivan, I guess you can run that up. New business? Approve Homestead credit?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, you have a second?
Second.
Second, all bares the aye.
Aye.
Prove Muskrat permit.
Basically, within this, we request a Muskrat permit from the state every year. And it takes effect May first until October. And usually before it makes the motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, the Muskrat permit is there.
Kevin handles it through his office.
So, so we have a blanket permit and then people come in and ask us if they can.
They come in and they register with Kevin.
You can get a permit.
Okay.
They register with the highway department.
I'll second.
But you need to have permission from our list, right?
Well, I.
Right, Mark?
What's that?
Permission.
Gray area. That's just for, that's just for, for reminding roads and stuff. We got a motion and a second on the Muskrat permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Prove a bill in city, Del Lake, Illinois, mail construction. Any questions on a bill?
The city of Del Lake is a one. And a lot popping. And mail construction is.
File payment for Ramsey Ford by going to Troy.
Yeah, that's the additional, what, fifteen or something?
In Lake Region Electric is now.
Just the difference on the change order?
For the elevator.
That was in there, but it adds up to ten dollars.
We had some of the. And that's all a hundred percent done?
Yes, there's only three thousand left, I think we ought to order this elevator, but it's completely done, yes.
I'll move to approve those three bills.
We have a motion to approve those bills, we have a second. Any other discussion? You want a roll call or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Burton's?
Aye.
Licon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Isler?
Aye.
Brown.
Lake Region Electric? That was in there too?
Yeah.
They were shortening up this one. The human resource discussion. Or is that more?
No, I just wanted to present it to the board because there's, again, some issues and I was just wondering if they would like to advertise for a human resource, part-time, full-time, whatever the board so chooses, so. I know Tanya is willing to help, but I think she can't do that forever. And I feel bad about contacting her all the time to, if there is an issue.
It sure makes it easier for our department heads. Higher.
Yeah, somebody to contact.
What's the history on how we handle capacity now?
We had an HR person till the end of December when Tanya resigned, so.
Do we have any budget for an HR person?
I think we have ten thousand left in that budget. And I do have for a payroll person, and I was thinking if we could combine the two. Because that's, you know, HR and payroll kind of go hand in hand. But I haven't hired a payroll person because I was thinking if the board wants for me to advertise for an HR payroll person together, so.
What kind of HR help could you get from an association?
Well, the HR that we're, they're doing our handbook right now for that two thousand dollars. And I got the first format, but I just wanted to, I'll make sure I get it out to you guys early enough for it to review, but he's giving me more tomorrow. So everybody, the department heads can go through everything to make sure that there's nothing more they want to change. So.
I think it'd be, maybe a good idea to ask the department heads to have some input in on, you know, where we should go with that as well, which is heard from heaven.
Right.
But what happened to the department head meetings?
I guess we're all so busy, we're, I mean, we have less and less employees in every office. Time to get away.
That's a county using their contract and somebody out of Grattan Forks. I don't know, I don't know.
So they have a contract to deal with?
Yeah, they just, when they need them, they come and help them and they get paid quarterly, so. You call.
You guys want me to research?
Good, she said, that's what, LOL told me, quite a lot of them. I assume they're still believing that, but. By dollar, association like Bill's.
Do you have any other counties around our size that has a full time?
Maybe the hospital or schools or something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, I know the hospital, I'm pretty sure they have one.
I like Bill's idea of the association, I think.
I like that idea.
I mean, we should get more out of that bucket, I think, you know what?
Dealing with those kind of issues, maybe similar issues with all the other counties?
Yes.
Another areas for check out, you know.
I don't think that's.
Okay. Prove a Raffa permit?
Aye.
Second.
A motion to approve, second, all bares the aye.
Aye.
Chairman signing, final document. Okay, you need a motion, you got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
You have a second, all bares the aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Terminal road discussion, we need to beat that up, Kevin?
Just, yeah.
Request from Ramsey County Planning and Zoning Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the commission, zoning and planning commission met yesterday. Some of the items of discussion that we had is the upcoming projects within the county. The major one was a sand pipe pipeline. And the discussion was whether or not we needed to grant down a conditional use permit across county. And the discussion kind of focused around, they've already made contact with townships, county highway superintendent, water resource district that went across and pools and different things like that, that we didn't feel that it was necessary to grant that. But maybe look into having, developing something for future. Whereas other industries or other projects come from the county such as this. We've asked Elizabeth to maybe contact some of the western area counties that have dealt with more expansion with their pipelines out there to see if they're doing anything special or different or what they've adopted. We got an update from Kevin about the, and then we also got an update from Mayor Johnson about the oil refinery. I think most of that was in the paper, what Mayor Johnson shared with us yesterday. But what we're really here to ask you for is, and we made a motion to ask permission from the county commission to advertise for a request or proposal to update the Ramsey County Comprehensive Plan. The plan was last done in nineteen seventy-three. So it's just a little bit. And so what we need, since we're not authorized to spend any money, is permission to go ahead and advertise for that, which does cost money. And to see what kind of response we get back from that.
Nobody has any guesses on the money?
No. You know, we, we thought that we could possibly ask more central planning to make you write a grant looking for the money once we had an idea of what it would cost for that.
Okay, I'm sure it's going to be something we'll have to put some time on, line it up, get somebody qualified to do it. And follow through, I mean, as we all know, there's a lot of structures that have been built around this area that I'm sure won't be cowed to, have to grandfather some of them in, I guess, the only way you can handle it.
Mm-hmm. One of the things of opening Pandora's box, maybe.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah. It's too bad something like this wasn't done after the Ozbarn issue.
Yeah.
You know, they were just walking around and they ended up using the states there. I'm sure whoever does this would follow the states.
Probably pretty close.
Pretty close, so. You know, the townships are going to use their own zoning planning. I'm all in favor of that.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see them keep that.
Yeah. You know, they can, they can maybe pin you back on part of this as well.
Correct. And.
It always starts out in. About ten years ago, we started to rewrite the zoning regulations for around the lake, the townships that were bordering the lake. And we just ran into so much difficulty with it that we never finished it. And not only that, I don't think that we had the expertise to do it. So if you guys can go ahead and do something like this, it's going to benefit the townships right around the lake because we can use something like this to update our own zoning manuals. In fact, South Manawakis pretty much mirrors the counties. And if you guys got somebody professional that did this, it might be such a thing that we would just have to approve, mirror copying it again. But the townships would really benefit from something like this if you go ahead and do it.
I think one of the key words used is the expertise to put this together.
Absolutely.
That's what we need to find, I'm sure Jeff would agree with that.
I just like the idea of starting the discussion, I like the idea of starting the discussion.
Yeah, I agree with you.
You know, we can just kind of hopefully get a decent plan together and like I said, expertise is the most important.
I like the idea of putting the horse back in front of the court, car, cart instead of waiting until we've got some huge issue such as an oil refinery. And then we don't have, and then our comprehensive plan was from nineteen seventy-three. I'd like to see us get this done, get it on board, and then we have a horse to pull us along. We've got our rules.
But the city has all type of zoning, correct?
Right, yeah.
You know, they're the ones that are dealing with the oil.
With the oil refinery, but I'm sure that there will be areas that the county will deal with in conjunction with the oil refinery. If it goes into.
How many townships right now have their own planning and zoning initiatives, like eighteen of the three six?
And that list out there, if you want me to grab it.
Is that close?
Yeah.
It's somewhere about fifty percent, I remember.
That's fine.
I, 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 I was obviously, but yeah. Even, like I said, even if, even if we don't have the oversight of zoning on that township like Kevin brought up, at least it's, you guys can look at it and maybe tie to that zoning. Because it'll be a good quality plan at that point, you can adopt similar guidelines, hopefully.
Absolutely.
In a lot of cases, the townships themselves or even subdivisions will have zoning regulations there. And they'll just pull out what they need out of, out of that. So you go to the, the individual subdivisions and get their information and then you put that into your township manual and that would go into the comprehensive plan or tied to it. And each one probably even get a little more elaborate or have something in there that the other one doesn't. And then it goes to the North Dakota filing handbook that's available as well. So, so usually what happens is they start out a zoning manual saying that it isn't here, you'll find it in your comprehensive plan or another state manual. So, yeah, except somebody in the state is doing it for another entity or another county. Be just as good as other things that we've talked about. So we, there was somebody brought up, was a company brought up, Chair?
County at Farley or something?
Jerry had a name and a contact.
All types of engineering deals with zoning planning and issues. Joel Quonbeck? Would you have some of that too for other clients?
I think you guys have to.
Probably half a dozen planners and his mark.
Why don't they have a motion to allow to request proposal forward? I think it's a good thing we did, you know, like she said, it, of course, handed the card before. We got our diet up now, we're going to, we're going to develop a lot of things here real fast, I think.
We talked about wind energy, things like that, the whole that stuff should get recorded right there.
Yeah.
I'll second.
You have a second? One request or one question I have would make sure that we probably contact an association of counties and see who they would recommend. I mean, they must have some pretty good knowledge on who could do this and come up with a good plan. I'm sure it would be quite like the states, that'd be my guess, so.
I think the city will probably do the same thing.
And I'd also like to have Jeff, all the information directed to Jeff, let him address the commission on this subject. Got it, right, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I got the short straw or something.
See your chair to turn.
Chair, chairman of the day, so.
We can have a motion in a second, you're on right here.
But I, but I was honored to take that chairmanship role and we'll run over this hard again, or as hard as you might.
Well, let's get a plan, then everybody won't have to have questions and.
Okay, see what, see what the justice is.
Anything else on that? No motion in a second, all bares the aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Job development payment, half of eleven for fifteen.
I'll approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. A motion in a second to approve the half payment for the job development? Any other discussion?
Payment for Deloitte Lake?
Okay. And a roll call now?
Yes, Burton's?
Hi.
Mycon?
Hi.
Eisler? Olson?
Hi.
Brown.
Any other announcements?
I have one, we have a new museum director going to start the first part of May. He hired from Milwaukee. We had a day in the last Friday night and it was a huge success. Very good stuff. Worthful hours. Sold out, couldn't came if you wanted to.
I guess we got one that paid about the lawn portion of the center. They had a search and what they could find out there and gonna cost somebody to fix the ceilings out there. A lot of them had like, just, they had all the false ceilings.
False ceilings.
And they just lift up the paddle and go in and use water in there. And one of the areas they had trouble with was where we were gonna thinking about doing a juvenile detention and facility. And the ceilings are like this, it was built. I mean, and, um, this is what Tom told us at our last meeting, right, Marcus? So he's gonna get some proposals and start on patching it together or something else, you know, what we can afford, I guess, as far as a lawn portion center.
It was shocking.
It was shocking.
They had...
Can I ask you, um, so are they currently housing prisoners in these false ceiling groups?
Did you gather that?
Not in that section, not over there.
Not anymore? How'd this stuff get up there then?
This was in the main jail, the main jail. We're, we're, we're talking of the false ceiling that wasn't...
Well, there, you know, there were cells, there were beds and cells and there was a record there.
They haven't used that.
They're not using that?
There's a record, right?
Yeah, there's a record. But they had pieces of wire this long. It was unbelievable.
Yeah, they had a tray full of stuff. So that's something you can be aware of and be sure of more reports after that. He was gonna get bids and proposals, gonna have to do there, so... But, um, he was very concerned. Law enforcement, so... But like I say, we'll probably have more information after an ex-law enforcement study.
Yeah, I'm very happy with how you worked it out there. Something we'll mess forward.
Okay. Any other announcements? None, any other business?
It's just a reminder of the class, but you all got a sheet that's coming up. Only one in Faribault. There's one in Faribault and then there's one here. It's, um... If you wanna go to Faribault, that's the mall, because Kevin's...
Thank you, thank you.
There hasn't been too many...
Don't go away.
And one, two, one.
The one in June is here, right?
Yes. You gotta make sure all your guys...
What's possible?
It's, it should be in your, um... It's, it's from the village, it's, um, the one in June, it's gonna take this training.
I didn't see it on TV, but I was listening to it on the radio, Dan, I was just ripping.
Two over times, ten to be in one for each.
If you're gonna showboard, make sure.
And then the one in Faribault is eight fifteen, but that's not... It's free. Did you ever decide you're going to...
Yeah, you are.
It's gonna be a long year.